Good evening. All right, can everyone hear?
Yes.
Good, okay. I'm Christine Ross. I'm the Chair of the Voter Services and Engagement Committee of the League of Women Voters, Salem. We welcome all of you to this forum for the Ward Three City Councilor Candidates. We'd like to thank the Salem Public Schools and the Principal of Collins Middle School for supporting civic engagement in Salem by allowing us to use this space for the forum. We'd like to also thank our partners, Salem Access Television, for their professional services videotaping this forum so it can be viewed later by those who could not attend in person. Finally, we're grateful for the residents of Ward Three for partnering with us to organize the forum and for providing suggestions for questions and issues to ask about in the forum. So our forum tonight will be moderated by Dustin Luca. Dustin is a North Shore native and a spokesperson for Salem State University, where he works in the university's Marketing and Communications Division. Previous to this role, Dustin was also a journalist for 20 years, which included 10 years covering the city of Salem for the Salem News from 2014 to 2024. Dustin is also the person behind the spreadsheet, a Salem election night tradition where he reports election results to the city through an online document that's populated as the results come in. I'll turn it over now to Dustin to begin the forum.
Thank you very much. Welcome everybody to the Ward Three Candidate Forum. The Ward Three City Councilor Candidates in alphabetical order are seated here at the table, Kevin Dougherty and Jason Sadoriak. We ask the members of the audience, please silence your cell phones and please also be quiet during the forum so that everyone can hear the candidates. Please hold your applause until the end of the forum. I'll start by presenting the format and the rules for the forum, and then we'll have the candidates' opening statements. First, the questions were obtained from members of the public. The forum organizers collected the questions and edited them for length and clarity. This event is a candidates' forum in which the candidates are given questions and the opportunity to answer about their approaches or their ideas. They will not engage with one another and they will not debate one another. There will be two-minute opening statements from each candidate this evening, and then I will ask prepared questions. Each candidate will have 90 seconds to respond, and then there will be one-minute closing statements. So first, we're going to start with the introductory statements. Each candidate will have two minutes. We flipped a coin to determine who goes first, and then that will also determine who goes first for the closing statements. So to open things, we're going to start with Jason.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Jason Sadoriak. I just want to take a moment to thank the League.
Is that on?
Is this on? It's not on?
Yeah, it's a button on the right.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. I'm Jason Sadoriak. I just want to take a moment to thank the League of Women Voters for putting on this event, and then also thank all of you for taking the time to come and join us tonight. I'm wanting to be your Ward Three City Councilor because public service is central to who I am. I want to take my experience and my expertise and apply it to Salem to try to better the quality of life here while also try to make it a more affordable place. A little bit about me, I'm a U.S. Marine Corps Combat Veteran. I currently work as an economist in transportation and land use for the federal government, and I've also volunteered across the country helping communities that have been devastated by natural disasters, volunteering for them. I am drawn to public service because I grew up in poverty. I watched a lot of people struggle, including my mother, who was raising my siblings and I on a cashier's wage, and I've just been driven to want to help people where I can and when it's needed. I moved to here, to Salem, in 2016, and I instantly fell in love with the place despite moving here on Halloween weekend. And it's an incredible place, but there's a lot to improve upon. And I've spent the summer knocking on doors, meeting folks in the neighborhood, listening to their needs and their concerns and their hopes, and I want to do what matters most to them. I want to work on modernizing and making our transportation network safer, creating opportunities for housing for all types of folks, and I believe I have the expertise, the experience, and the leadership background to do that. And I hope this November that you will consider me being your next Ward Three City Councilor. Thank you.
Well done, sir.
Thank you very much. Now we'll have Kevin.
Good evening, everybody. How are you? You warming up?
Well.
Well?
Well.
Hi, my name's Kevin Dougherty. Lived in Salem now for 26 years now. Embedded in the neighborhoods, embedded in the city school system, embedded in the sports. Both my boys, big-time football players, huge football players, all the way from Peewee all the way through high school. Loved the high school, treated the high school like they were my own family. At any given point in my house, there might have been 26 football players in my house, okay? Feeding them, giving them time. In fact, we got to the point where we almost adopted three boys, okay? Because they were allowed in my house at any given time. A little bit about myself, born in Boston, exact opposite of you, Jason. I was raised in Brookline, okay? Where actually Boston became my playground. But during that time, educated, a couple of private schools and so on and so forth. Enjoyed my education, but now it's time to put the education to work. It's time to start improving Salem. Not let Salem improve you, you improve Salem. Your vote needs to matter from now on. You need to keep going forward. The city can no longer just go and say, hey, that's what we're gonna do? That's what we're gonna do? No. Those days should be over with. We need to move forward. We need to help this people, the taxpayers. We need to address issues that are not being addressed, okay? That's my beginning of my story. Hopefully you get to know me better in the next 30 minutes. Thank you very much. There you go, buddy.
Thank you very much. So this is going to begin the questions portion of the evening. Responses will go in alphabetical order and then reverse so that each candidate responds first to a different question. It's going to go back and forth. This one will begin with Kevin. Last year, there were forest fires in Wards Three and Four, and the fire department has invested in appropriate equipment as they believe such fires will be more prevalent and significant in the future. What further measures should the council take to make Salem more resilient, sustainable, and safe?
Great question. First of all, in the back of Walmart where these fires took place, people have been living there for up for three and a half, four years. That needs to be addressed in itself. The indigent, the homeless people, okay? You had a murder down there. Two murders, almost. Was that addressed? It was kind of put on the back shelf. Why? You're putting the people back there on the back shelf. You have to put these people forward. The fire department in this, this city is absolutely wonderful. Know many of the firefighters, all the way from Tim to Mr. Silva to Dicky Thomas, so on and so forth. They worked their butts off, okay? Do they have enough supplies to do it? Is there enough to give them to keep going forward? I'm not sure about that. I haven't had the chance to dive into the financials of hiring more firefighters. Remember seeing something where we want to put a restriction on hiring firefighters? My son, who's 35, is a firefighter in the city of Brockton. He's a great guy, great firefighter, has been now for the last three years, okay? And I, and my wife's telling me something up there. I think we need to investigate hiring more firefighters. There you go, buddy.
Thank you. I think resiliency is one of the most important issues that we need to tackle as a city, not only with our, in regards to wildfires, but also we're a coastal city and there's a lot of flooding that occurs. I think it's most important to ensure that our infrastructure is up to a good standard to be able to handle that, to be able to incorporate newer technologies and processes to ensure that places in Ward Three are not being flooded, or the Salem Woods is being maintained in a way where brush fires can't occur, whether that is man-made or natural. And in my experience, I've developed and maintained multimillion-dollar budgets and projects that deal with trade-offs, in particular dealing with climate change and resiliency, in particular with transportation infrastructure, but I feel like I can take my experience there and apply it to the city budget and be able to work to make sure that the fire department, DPW, and even the police department when it comes to enforcement of the encampments have the resources that they need to be able to get the job done. I think when it comes to climate change and resiliency, in the military, we call it a threat multiplier. So they in themselves are a problem, but most importantly, they exacerbate other things. They create homelessness. They tear up the roads that then inflict damage to your vehicles, make quality life difficult. So it's really important that we tackle this.
Next question is going to actually start with you, Jason. Is Salem headed in the right direction, or do you see a need for change? If you believe change is needed, what about Salem's current trajectory would you like to see changed?
I think Salem's heading in the right direction. I think there's a lot of challenges ahead of it, just as always, there has been challenges before it. And it's really important that we put people in place of power, but also within our staff that have the expertise to be able to tackle that. I think that growth needs to be incremental. I think we can't just take it all on, whether that's housing, despite being a housing crisis. I know a lot of people just want to build large complexes like in Shetland Park, but we need to make sure the utilities can handle it, and we need to make sure that the growth that we want to obtain to continue the quality of life here, to receive the benefits of a broader tax base, whether that's commercial or by bringing more people in, is done so in a way that isn't a burden onto those who already live here. We want to welcome new neighbors because that brings in new ideas. It brings in younger families that they can participate in the wonderful lives that we've all been able to participate in. This is about being a community, and communities are living things. They grow. So I do think we've been heading in a good direction, but it needs to be balanced and we need to have good judgment about it, and I believe that I have the expertise to be able to handle that.
Thanks, Jason. Dustin, you might have to stand up at any given point now.
Um, probably you're just staying down.
If you want to stay sitting down, I'll sit down. Is Salem headed in the right direction? I don't think it is. And the reason for that being, all you do is turn a corner. There's a new building. There's another new building. There's another new building. Try to get up 107. No. Between 3:35 in the afternoon to 5:30. It's almost impossible to take a two-minute trip to go to Market Basket to get a gallon of milk. Now, that used to take five minutes, takes 20 minutes. I think it's wrong. You're overbuilding, okay? You really are. I think the city needs to pull back its reins, take a really good look at what it's doing. Can the infrastructure hold up to all these new buildings? In my case, absolutely not. We lose water. Three weeks, almost guaranteed, once every three weeks. We lost it the other night. Electricity went down the other night. We need to slow down, look where we need to go. You want a new high school? We need to look where the money's gonna come from, not just the state grant. That state grant is actually your money anyways, okay? You've already paid into that, okay? We need to slow down and ask our residents what they would like to do.
Thank you very much. Kevin, this one will start with you. Many immigrant families live in Ward Three, and the parking lots of Shaw's, Home Depot, and Market Basket are places ICE have targeted in many cities. As a councilor, what would you do if ICE came to Ward Three and began to arrest Salem residents? And what actual powers do you have to do anything about it?
I have no power to do, to deal with what the national government wants to do. I think that's a, needs to be discussed among everybody in Salem, not just the councilors. It needs to be discussed amongst everyone. I mean, is ICE a bad thing? You have to ask everybody who's sitting out here right now, not just us. You have to ask the mayor. Are they good or are they bad? Some people say, okay, they're good. Some people say they're bad. Have they taken X amount of people off the street that are no good? Yes. Have they taken X amount of people off the street that shouldn't have been taken off the street? Yeah. But you know what? Mistakes happen in life. You gotta go forward, and you gotta discuss it among everybody, not just the politicians in the city. Everybody needs to have a forum. If you had a forum, this room should be full if you were going to ask that question. You need to go forward on that issue, okay? It's take a step back and look at the issue for what the issue really is, what the people of the city feel about that issue. That's who you need to ask, not just the politicians in this city.
Here we go. You're next, Jason.
Thank you. I think what the federal government has been doing, particularly through ICE and border control, is cruel and unusual. We've got masked men who are not identifying themselves, pulling people off the streets without warrants and an understanding of really who they're picking up. And this country is based on due process of the law, and I appreciate living in the city of Salem where we have a police department that can handle public safety here. If someone is breaking the law, our police department will handle it, whether, regardless of your background or immigration status. And it's up to us to have our own community handle that and not have unaccountable people do that. And as city councilor, I will do what I can to support the police department in that mission, and I will also share resources from the community that let people know what their rights are, let them know how to navigate the immigration system, and also, as a veteran that worked with interpreters in Afghanistan and Iraq, I take this really personally, but I've shared a lot of resources on how to get through the immigration process for those that we made a commitment to. And I think we need to continue to do that for people that are part of our community that are just trying to become citizens like us who pay taxes and just want to support our families.
Thank you very much. This question will begin with Jason. With the growing density of Salem's downtown, how do you see Wards Three roll, if any, in helping to alleviate some of the housing density and affordability issues in Salem?
Yeah, I think regardless if it's about downtown with a city, you can't just put all your housing and your amenities in one place. It needs to be spread out to help alleviate traffic, and I think Ward Three, there are a lot of opportunities for that, particularly around Highland Ave. We've got a lot of parking lots that are large that are never used, even in, during times where it's peak for shopping. So, and there is actual appetite from the people who own those properties that want to see housing. That way, we can not only pull that traffic or the people from downtown from there, but also you have the amenities and everything you need closer to you. I think that there's an opportunity to look at zoning to create smaller opportunities for food, for daycare, for things of that nature where you don't have to go into downtown and deal with the tourism and deal with the traffic, but you can stay within our community here and, you know, treat it like it's a neighborhood. Have the things that you need and not have to go too far, not have to drive 20 minutes to get to a place, maybe even walk there. So I wouldn't say that there's a responsibility or a role, but I think there's an opportunity to transform the ward in a way that preserves the character but also creating benefits.
Thanks, Jason. Could you restate the kind of question again?
Absolutely.
Moose, thank you.
With the growing density of Salem's downtown, how do you see Wards Three roll, if any, in helping to alleviate some of the housing density and affordability issues in Salem?
I think first of all, what you have to do again is slow down the progress, take a look what's available to you as a city, not what is given to you, but what can you get, okay, from the wards? Not just Three, not just Four, Six, so on and so forth. To get to affordability, you have to structure it in such a way that the people you're getting you're gonna welcome to and can afford to live here. It's not just, you know, pick a parking lot here, pick a park, let's build something here, let's build something here, such as a new gas station on 107. How many people in this room knew that gas station was going in? Okay? How long did that take to find out? A while. I didn't find out until six weeks ago, okay? Six weeks ago. Why? Why weren't we as neighbors informed? How come we weren't? How come we didn't get the email? How come the city didn't post an email? Hey, we may have a gas station going in there. Who bought it? Where's it coming from? Is it state-funded at all? Do they have any grants for it? I never knew until, like I said, six weeks ago. So to get into the affordability issue is a whole different question, okay? It's just not Ward Three, again, Four, Five, Six, It's every ward, okay? Thank you. I'll be up first.
And before we go to the next question, if we could just be a little quiet in the audience while they're answering the questions, that would be appreciated. Thank you. Question number five, this one will begin with Kevin. What are your views on how to manage tourism to the benefit of Ward Three businesses? Are there specific policies or initiatives you support that would help spread the economic gains of tourism to Ward Three?
I certainly do, Moose. Thank you for the question, by the way, okay? By the way, what, Moose is his nickname, I'm sorry. Tourism, that's another one altogether. We all hate, or we all used to dislike or hate, okay? September, October, okay? In two weeks, November. Now it starts in when? April, June, July, you can't get downtown. And everybody can sit back and laugh a little bit, but my friend closed his cheese shop after 10 years. 10 years he was downtown, Pete was. Great stuff, great food, great guy, employed 20 people. Those 20 people no longer have a job, okay? So you've got to cut back a little bit. They gave the store next to him a restaurant, I'm not going to mention its name, six parking spots. That took six parking spots away from a retail store. It forced him to close. He's beginning to lose money. And if you can afford to have little stores like that kicked out of the city, something's wrong. I thought it was a community of small business.
I think tourism is an opportunity, but we don't want to define our economy on it. We don't want our economy to depend on it for the whole year. What I really appreciate about Ward Three is that, especially where I live, it's walking distance to downtown, but it's very quiet. And the further you go into Ward Three, it's quiet. And I've done door knocking and I've spoken to folks all the way down south, and they like it that way. And so I think tourism is an opportunity, but it's not the best fit for Ward Three. There needs to be a market. Now, we do have shovel services to bring folks into downtown so they don't have to drive or find parking. There might be some opportunities to bring some mobile tourism services or food opportunities to those spots so they don't have to depend on downtown. There are ways that the city or the city council can do licensing and permitting for that, but at the end of the day, it's going to come down to what Ward Three residents want. And if they prefer the tourism stay in downtown where it's a bit of a theme park, if I'm going to be frank, so they can have a nice, comfortable experience, and we can rely on businesses that bring in value, bring in a tax base all year round, then that's what I think needs to be supported. And I think that's actually what's best for Ward Three.
Thank you very much. This question will begin with you. What opportunities do you see for the city and council to expand economic opportunities for Salem residents?
Yeah, I, I mentioned Highland Ave where we've got big box shopping markets, large underutilized parking spots. I think there's a lot of examples across the country where there's mixed-use, mixed-family developments that take advantage of higher-quality stores and shopping opportunities and amenities. I think there's appetite for that. I think that the transportation network, as a transportation planner myself, Long Highland Ave, does have the capacity for that, which doesn't necessarily matter because if you bring the people to that mixed-use development, then they don't have to travel too much. It's right there at their doorstep. And by doing that, increasing housing units, increasing business activity where it's diverse, not only do you have a larger tax base, so you don't have to increase taxes, but you also are able to withstand some economic downturns because the environment is more diverse, and you don't just have certain types of business failing, and then you have all of your business failing. So I think by encouraging the environment for business to be more market-friendly is important. That can be done through zoning, that can be done through innovative finance, things that I've worked on myself through my job and my other experiences, but there's definitely opportunity there.
Thanks, Jason. Economic growth. Where would you start? It's an interesting question, isn't it? How about Winter Island? Let's start there, not just Ward Three again, okay? There's a hangar out there that's been out there for 60, 70 years, underutilized. Let's build that up, okay? Let's do that. Let's build up the structure, okay, where kids can get out of school, take a bus downtown, go see what Salem's really like, okay? Not just a football field over here, okay? Not just a university down the street. Let's do it in such a way, again, I'm going to go back to this, where we agree, we talk about it, we see where the development needs to. 107 is a traffic jam all the time now, okay? The Rotary down there, huh, that's another thing, okay? Going down Swambskill. You need, there's 40 or 50 acres back there. Would you like to develop? No, okay? You need to get together as a community and discuss these things, not just let certain people say, we're going to put a development here, we're going to do this, and we're going to put that through the door. Those days should be over with. Done, okay? Finished completely. Everybody needs to be asked, okay? Not just the council, not just the mayor. Here we go.
Some next ones for you.
Oh, geez, thank you.
You're welcome. The school committee has unanimously voted for the construction of a new Salem High School. Next year, Salem will have the opportunity to vote on this proposal. What will be your vote on it and why?
No. $450 million to develop a new high school. You have 900 students currently in that high school. It can hold 2,200 students. Talk about being not utilized. The automotive billings, how often you see cars go in and out of there? Very rarely, okay? You need to get to the structure of the billing. You need to do a study on the building, okay? Is it worth $450 million to do? No, not for the taxpayer. You want to see your taxes go up again? Another 3.5%? 4%? You want to see your water bill go back up again? And we're going to hear about it, and I guarantee I'm going to hear about it, net zero. If you want to take a look at net zero, look at Watertown. Eight to 12 years to achieve net zero from the 26th high school that's going in, okay? By then, the technology's going to change again. It's going to change and change and change. So will your taxes go back up to renovate a new high school? Or would you like to take an old high school, put $200 million into it, and really take a good look at it and rebuild the high school? The $450 to $250 million grant is what you've already paid the tax anyways from the government. So it's your own money building your own high school.
So I support plans for the Salem High School and the debt exclusion.
So it's your own money building your own high school.
So I support plans for the Salem High School and the debt exclusion. I think for the, our share of the cost, I think it's incredible opportunity to be able to build a new high school. The current one is in dire need of maintenance and from what I've heard, twenty-five percent of the utility budget from the city goes to that, that school. It's like a million dollars a year. And I do a lot of benefit cost analysis in my work, putting projects up against one another, and I am very confident that if you put the maintenance of trying to keep this current high school together from falling apart, up against the new one, the new one's gonna come up on top. It's gonna be an incredible investment, and that's not even considering the benefits to our children here. And I fully plan to have a family here, raise children here, and I'm excited for the new high school. I think it's incredible opportunity for the programming that's gonna happen there, it's gonna be more efficient, it's gonna be more advanced, and going back to the cost sharing, yes, that is taxpayer dollars, that's taxpayer dollars that are gonna be spent somewhere else. We can spend it here and therefore spend less of a share on the high school for something that's gonna be truly transformative for our community. And if we don't, we're gonna spend more and we're not gonna have a high quality experience for our kids.
Question number eight. There is an active project underway to assess current conditions and chart the future of Jefferson Avenue in conjunction with the second train station project as a key entrance corridor to Salem. What would you like to see in that corridor?
Yeah, so as I mentioned, my background, it's, I'm economist in transportation and land use planning. My actual focus is on transit oriented development and I look at projects all across the country that are doing something similar. So I get to see the projects that are doing really well and turn out to be successful. And I also see the ones that fail, that don't take into account the, what the residents in the area want or how much value we can get from the developer from that. I think from what I've seen so far, this is also an incredible project with a lot of opportunity that's gonna connect two areas of Salem, that's gonna really support the students that come in here at Salem State University, but we need to make sure it's not a burden on the people that live in that area. There's been a few public comments that I've been to, I think the city is receptive, but we need to absolutely make sure that the people, in particular for Ward Three, are able to receive a benefit from that. And in my experience of the research, I would love to own a house down there because the housing price is gonna go up, but that's important to note because that could cause some displacement or make it harder for renters to be able to rent there, the people who would be using that stop to maybe go into Boston to work. So we need to be, we need to have good judgment in the design of this, not only of the project, but how it impacts the surrounding community.
Thank you, sir. Good question. Do you really want that going down through Canal Street in that area again? Can the infrastructure support that? Can it do it? The traffic down there at four o'clock in the afternoon alone already with the new development down there is horrific. You can't even get to Patriot Seafood if you wanna have scallops or clams for a late night dinner, okay? Because you have to wait twenty minutes in traffic just to get through the light and now it's backing up beyond Doobies. Backing up to the church, you're halfway up the hill just to go to make a left turn. So if you would like that, fine, if you want more traffic, again, Kevin's gonna say, slow it down, do a better study because you're gonna add a hundred and fifty to two hundred cars in there, okay, with the units. And along with the units that are being developed there on Canal Street, oop, what's going on at the university? How many units are going in there? Is the Marriott gonna be able to go up the street where Brito is and Sammy's? You gonna put another five hundred units in there? The infrastructure of this city cannot handle that at the present time. And by the way, Canal Street's sinking again, okay? You can't figure that one out, they haven't been able to figure it out in fifty years. Sorry.
How would you improve pedestrian safety and walkability in Salem?
Oh, I guess I'm up, sorry. Pretty simple, first of all, the study that was done right on red was a joke, okay? Nobody got hit by any cars, you spent X amount of dollars to do that. What you really wanna do is put real people in real situations, press the light, cross the street. Is that the reality? Of course it is. If you wanna keep your pedestrians safe, make those little ding 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 bells a little bit louder. I was just standing outside down here at the corner, I could hardly hear that bell. What about the hearing impaired, okay? They can hardly hear it, okay? I'm not that, but I couldn't even hardly hear it. So to improve it, you gotta do a public safety, okay? And you gotta start in your schools. You gotta teach children not to walk across the street with a phone in their hand, okay? You gotta teach children to not run across the street, obey your traffic guys that are out there, and ladies, okay? That's how you begin to improve it. In downtown, we all know what's the matter with downtown, okay? You've just got too many people jammed in there, okay, for six months out of the year now. You have to, again, retract, okay? Add to subtract and subtract to add, it works, you gotta do it. You just can't have everybody going this way and that way. You're next.
So as I've mentioned, I work in transportation and I do a lot of safety work, and I think what we call turn transportation, whether it's biking or pedestrian, walkability is really important to me for a few reasons. One, so I'm actually a wounded warrior, I was wounded in combat and I've got a plate in my foot making it painful and difficult to walk. So I think it's really important to have a high quality of standard for pedestrian network. We need to understand who we're designing for and how people are gonna use it. And another point, for where I come from, safety is paramount. Efficiency's great, but if you lose one life, whether it's happened, whether there's a past example of it or not, that one life means everything. And so we've got ways, analysis, models to be able to determine how unsafe an intersection is or a conflict place to determine that if volume of vehicles keeps increasing, then you can expect a fatality. And so we need to get ahead of that, we need to design our infrastructure, and the way that we go about it is you need to have multiple different countermeasures. So when, as city councillor, I would look into this to make sure we're tackling it from different angles because then you're lowering the risk and you're ensuring that pedestrians and people who are biking are safe, and also vehicles too.
Thank you very much. Question ten starts with you. MassDOT is again working on plans to redesign Route 107 and the Highland Avenue corridor. What are the important problems to be solved and how do we create a safe roadway while allowing traffic to flow?
Once again, in my wheelhouse, I think first and foremost, safety is paramount, but also we need to be able to ensure that we have a good partnership with the state. There's only so much we can do as a city with a state road, so we need to help them better understand the safety circumstances along that road. I'm not quite sure if a road safety audit has been done yet for that corridor, but not only will that identify the things that need to be worked on, but having that work in place will encourage the state to wanna work. They don't wanna work if there's a lot more effort that needs to be done. They're hoping that we pick up the slack and ensuring that we have a good partnership with our state rep, our state senator, and then also our counterparts in the Department of Transportation will help move that along. And I think in regards to the corridor, we need to make sure that the sort of, the site alignments are handled so that when people are driving quickly, they're not running into someone just pulling out onto the road. We need to ensure that there's better access for the hospital, 'cause there's a lot of people going in and out, in particular, people going into it are more concerned, rightly so, of the people that they're visiting at that hospital, and they're slamming on the brakes before they get in there. And so we need to design that part in particular to be more safer so people aren't getting rear ended as they're pulling into the hospital.
Thank you, sir. Again, 107, here we go. It's too skinny, it's not wide enough. How are you gonna do it? Where are you gonna take the land from? Eminent domain on one side, eminent domain on the other side? We have a great state representative that we could be in conjunction with, with Joe Lovely, okay? We can talk to her, she can help us through the state. How are we going to structure that deal? How are you going to get transportation through there? When Union Hospital closed down, you opened up a gateway, okay, of ambulances getting caught in there every day of the week. The highway is not large enough, it is not wide enough. You gotta do a study. There was a state, uh, safety study done on that six or seven years ago, and it was determined it was not a good idea to widen that highway. One suggestion was build a bridge over the highway so you could walk and get to parking lots easier, but no, you gotta go deeper than that, guys, you gotta go a lot deeper than that. You gotta really put the money into it. Instead of putting money here and there, if you want more transportation, talk to the MBTA. Or I could talk to, never mind, I won't say that, okay, my brother, okay? He's an expert in transportation, but beyond that, okay? Oh, sorry, gotta stop.
You got the next question?
Thank you, Moose.
The Life Bridge and Harbor Light expansion will have a major impact on Ward Three. How would you work to mitigate the impacts of this expansion on the residents of Ward Three?
First of all, has anybody ever gone down there besides myself and talked to the people in Riley Plaza? Okay, what do they say? They don't want another bed, they want help, they wanna get healed. Not all of them do, like any part of any population, okay? Some people will do it, some people won't, but I'd say sixty-five to seventy-five percent, like Michael and Christine down there, they want help. They don't wanna walk in the back of the Bridgewell Bed Unit, as I call it, and go, needles everywhere. Anybody been down there and walked behind there lately? Please do, okay? How you gonna do it is not by building a new building, okay? Not giving it to Marblehead, not giving it to Beverly, not giving it to Bebitty, and not giving it to neighbors, 'cause they don't want the people. They don't want the indigent people, they want Salem to take the burden, okay? Nine hundred thousand dollars for what? What are you gonna do? You wanna displace that whole community back there at the same time? Has anybody talked to those people back there? No, again, you need a community to get together and talk it out and not just have specific people telling you what to do, okay? Bridgewell, remember, I'm not gonna go there about the owners and so on and so forth. I've done a lot of work on it and a lot of study.
Yeah, so I, I take this very personally. I mentioned I grew up in poverty, I was actually technically unhoused the summer before I started high school, so I am really sympathetic to the plight of the people in that area. I've walked through Riley Plaza all the time and I've spoken to Life Bridge. I think we need to have a multifaceted solution. Life Bridge is part of that. I've visited, I've seen some of the housing that's happening there. It's, it's a bunch of cots and bunk beds that are divided by blankets. It's, it's not good quality of life and they need wraparound services, they do provide some, and I would love to push them to be able to expand their services in that way, but under those circumstances, no one wants to live in those circumstances. But it would be much more difficult to be able to take those opportunities when you're living in those conditions. But also we need to make sure that our police department, the community impact unit, has the resources that it needs to be able to proactively and reactively handle really anywhere in Salem, but in particular Raleigh Plaza, and ensure that those people are taken care of. I've spoken to the communities in that area, in particular with Gesna, and I'm committed to continue those conversations, hear their, their concerns, act as a liaison between them and the police department and the city to try to work through that. Life Bridge is not the only solution, we have to have other solutions like housing first.
This is the final question of the evening. Jason, I'll start with you. How do you intend to involve residents of Ward Three and city council decisions that affect them?
So I think it's really important communication. I have thought of many ways to be able to connect with the community, I've been doing a lot of door knocking, but in particular, I wanna create a, a system to be able to have redundancies, to not only be able to get information out of what the city is gonna be doing, but also take in that information, to be able to hear our neighbors' concerns, their needs, and their hopes. I plan to do a newsletter, there's a lot of great examples out there to follow, but I want to be able to make one that is my own personality, that be able, that's able to connect you with services, be able to let you know what's going on with council, but also let you know what I'm thinking when I'm voting something or trying to help guide better services in the city. I also want to create opportunities to do essentially little town halls or little coffee shop talks throughout the year where you can sit down with me and, and just listen to what I have to say about the agenda and upcoming events. And also, I'm very available, I do work in Cambridge, but when I'm here in Salem, one of my favorite things to do is just connect with folks, whether that's in the ward or in downtown. I wanna be accessible and I want to be able to be your advocate and be able to help you navigate problems with the city.
Thank you, Jason. Simple, easy way, call me, email, no problem, that's how we get to it. I find out what's going on in the city, I relay it to you guys. You can call me anytime, give, I'm retired, so I've got a couple of hours a day besides taking the dog for a walk, okay? I'm there, all right? I can do that, no problem. You need to talk also amongst yourselves. You just can't go, hey, did you hear what Bobby said? Did you hear what John said? Oh, that's gonna happen? No, you need to know if it's going to happen. Like I stated earlier, I didn't know about it, about the gas station, till six weeks ago, didn't know about it, okay? But that's what you need to do. You can call me, email me, a newsletter will do well, once every two months, not every month, you don't need that, okay? Because most people don't read their emails anymore, okay? And that's the truth, okay? When was the last time you sat down, you looked at your emails, what do you got, sixty thousand in there that you haven't gotten rid of, okay? It's the truth, okay? Communicate with your next door neighbor at the time, okay? Instead of going around and saying, okay, ten seconds left, I'm sorry, okay? I'm done, thank you.
Thank you very much for your responses.
Oh, thanks, Moose.
Next, we will go into closing statements. Each candidate will have one minute for a closing statement, and we are going to go in reverse from the opening statements, which will begin with Kevin.
Again, first name's Kevin, last name's Darty. Grew up in Brookline, playground was Boston, but I'm gonna give you a little more information on me, okay? Besides, my education's great, so on and so forth. I grew up in a household of politicians, okay? My older brother was a campaign manager for a certain governor of the state, which meant then there were sessions held in my parents' living room, okay? From Ted Kennedy to Michael Dukakis to probably the best speaker of the House ever, and they were done once or twice on a weekly basis to get a certain gentleman elected, okay? That's how I grew up, and my dad was great. He tolerated all politicians, no matter who they were. My older brother was a councillor in Brookline too, so I learned from him too at the same time, and campaign manager, okay? That's me, I am what I am, and that's it. Thank you.
What, what draws me to the role of Ward Councillor is its main responsibility, connecting with folks. folks. When I moved here to Salem, it was to work for Congress and Seth Moulton. It was my first day of constituent services, and I really appreciated the impact it could have. But it wasn't until this summer that I really felt that impact. I was just randomly walking in the streets of Salem, and I bumped into a couple. They recognized me, I sort of recognized them, and they reminded me that, back then, ten years ago, I helped them navigate the VA home loan progress, process, to find a home. They had some complications, and I helped them through it. And they told me to this day, they're still living in that home. And so I see being a Ward Councillor not only a responsibility, but a privilege, and I hope this November, you would afford me that privilege. I would love to represent you, be an advocate for you, and to be your next Ward Three City Councillor.
Thank you for your closing statements. Please, let's give them all one more round of applause. Now, I'm going to turn it over to Christine from the League of Women Voters Salem to close out the event. Make sure you vote.
What date was that, Moose?
November fourth.
Thank you. Thank you to the candidates for running to serve Salem as Ward City Councillor, and thank you for sharing your ideas with the voters this evening. Thank you to the audience for listening to the candidates this evening and to inform your voting choices on November fourth. Thanks to Dustin Luca for moderating the forum, and we would like to also again thank the Salem Public Schools and the Collins Middle School Administration for allowing us the use of this space for the forum, and to Salem Access TV who are taping the forum this evening. The League of Women Voters Salem has a website with a voter toolbox with information on all the candidates running, their profiles and positions on issues based on a survey that was sent by the League to all candidates. So please check that out, the League's website. This forum will be available on SATV's YouTube government channel soon, so if you know people who are unable to attend this evening, let them know that it will be available for them to stream, watch at their leisure. Please remember to vote on Tuesday, November fourth. Tell your friends to vote also. Ward Three votes at Salem High School on Wilson Street, and the polls are open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. If you need to register to vote or to update your registration, you have until October 24, and you can also apply for a mail-in ballot if you want to vote from home. So thank you to the candidates and to the audience. Thanks again. Let's give them all a round of applause.
Then, what's the next ward to go through, another forum?
Oh, we have a forum tomorrow night with Ward One, and that's going to be at Root and at Shetland Park. And then on Thursday, the 23rd, there will be a Ward Four forum at the Community Life Center at 6:00 p.m. The one at Root tomorrow night is 7:00 p.m.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.